Remember who's in here tonight, we realize that we are cared for by an almighty God who loves us. Father, tonight, guide our direction, give us wisdom. The Father, we seek your presence, we seek your anointing, Lord, we seek your wisdom. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. It is 5:30 on this March 4th, 2019, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Yeah. We have a quorum, barely, but we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremsepp, if there's any additions or corrections.
Thank you, your honor, members. I do have a few things this evening to add. Under the consent agenda, I'd just like to add a motion directing staff to continue working on this autonomous vehicles piece. I think it would be helpful to have an action of the council to that effect. And then, under ordinances and resolutions, I need to add a resolution of support for community energy transition grants legislation, which is on the desk before you this evening.
Is there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion approving the amended agenda. Your honor, thank you, Anthony.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening, or also there are no awards to bid or petitions or communications, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. There is a copy of the consent agenda in your package, along with one that Lynn is putting on the screen right now. And as noted, we will include item number 10 is a resolu-- I'm sorry, a motion directing staff to continue work on the autonomous vehicles presentation that we saw from Frank and Aaron earlier this evening. So with that, if there's any items on the consent agenda anyone would like to talk about individually, we can remove them, or we can entertain a resolution to approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you. Second to that.
Second.
Thank you, Agberg. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Hager.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, item number one, we will have a first reading of ordinance 87th series Right-of-Way regulations. And Rolf, do you want to comment on any of these, or do we want to get them introduced first?
I can comment.
Yeah, please do.
Individually. Ordinance number 80 is a regulation to assist the city to regulate its public right-of-ways, to make sure that if there's constructions or facilities placed within our right-of-ways, that people first register and obtain permits to place any structures or types of facilities within the right-of-way. You can imagine the situation where, you know, someone wants to come in and put in a tower for a communication, for wireless communication or something like that. Currently, they could just go in there and plop down a tower regardless of what's located there, you know. And there's lots of things located within our rights-of-ways that need to-- we need to be cognitive of, and our engineer can tell us all the fabulous things that are working in our right-of-ways, such as electrical transmissions.
Public private utilities.
Public private utilities. So we currently have not regulated the use of the right-of-ways, and so we've been discussing this. We have-- we believe that it makes sense to at least try to regulate the right-of-way the best that we can from excavations, from people placing structures, to house whatever utilities they may wish to put in our right-of-ways, the supplies to.
Restoration.
Restorations, returning the streets back after you've cut a hole in the street to make sure that it's paved correctly and requires a permit for any activities to be conducted within the right-of-way. And if they're going to place facilities on our streetlights, in some aspects, they might be able to do that with our permission, but also puts a permit process and a registration process in place. And some of these cell phone towers are able to put these structures on some of our facilities, such as street lamps possibly, and use our electricity. So this also requires that there be reimbursement for that, and so this is a fairly comprehensive document, as you can see, that is designed to allow us to patrol our right-of-ways.
Thank you for that, Rolf. With that, we would need someone to introduce that ordinance, and I would entertain that. Thank you, Anthony. Scott, did you have a question?
Yeah. This is apparently primarily directed at like phone companies, cell phone companies, things that would go underground or up on pools and whatnot. Is there overlap with this with just like a homeowner who wants to put in a new mailbox? Someone that wants to do something with their driveway and it goes over the right-of-way? How does it affect, you know, just private landowners as opposed to companies that are going to be doing something in a commercial development?
This doesn't preclude the property owners from placing like mailboxes and that type of structure within the right-of-way, because those are, you know, for mail.
You're going to have to get a permit for it. I mean, you're talking about that kind of stuff. So to what degree is it going to make a regular homeowner more complicated?
I don't think it will. I don't think it'll have any impact on homeowners. We're primarily.
No, not really, but if there is a private owner, too, there are standards. We're-- that mailbox is not even set by the city, but the postal code, so we're hoping they would contact us, so we can make sure, you know, it's put up in the correct spot. But restoration within the right-of-way following these projects is a big thing, big thing. So helps us manage those a little bit better.
Sounds fine. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Rolf. Item number two is also a first reading of ordinance 817 series related to telecommunications facilities regulations. Rolf, would you like to comment on that?
Again, we currently do have a telecommunications facilities regulation, but it's quite old. And so in conjunction with the right-of-way ordinance regulation, it made sense to take a look at our telecommunications as well. And this talks about primarily wireless facilities such as small cell towers that could be placed within the right-of-ways to make sure that they are installed, you know, in such a way that there's-- and if they have like related facilities with a tower, that they would be used stealth, that they would not be intrusive to the public, that they wouldn't necessarily be visible. It regulates the height of some of these things that can go in by how high they can actually be. It regulates what could be located within the right-of-way, and it also places some restrictions on residential neighborhoods receiving cell towers and that type of stuff. I mean, we're starting to get some inquiries about cell tower placement within the city, and it's-- this is a way to kind of regulate it the best we can. The Federal Communication Commission has opened up the rules significantly to allow these cell towers to be placed virtually anywhere. And so that's why we took a look at this, for the city to regulate its right-of-ways and for the city to regulate the best it can for some of the cell tower development. It was suggested that the city, all cities in the state of Minnesota, take a look at their ordinances, because if they don't have anything in place, I think it's by the end of April that they may be precluded from regulating some of this stuff. So this ordinance was also basically based upon the model ordinance provided by the league, and there wasn't a whole lot of significant revisions within, from what we had previously, but it felt-- was felt that it should be updated for the-- just because that makes sense to update these things from time to time. So is there any other questions about it? It does not-- it does not accept it from this ordinance our amateur radio antennas and other facilities that may be placed on private property owners' property for those types of activities. So there's not going to have an impact on ham radio or anything like that.
Thank you, Rolf. Any questions? Now, we'll need someone to introduce that ordinance.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Brett. Item number three is the first reading of ordinance 827 series, city code 6.26, relating to the number of dogs and cats allowed in our code. And we've talked about this at committee multiple times. Do you want to highlight the changes, Rolf? It's-- I can go over to it.
Sure, I can. I was requested to update our animal ordinance to make it clear and to allow for up to four dogs, and that includes one cat. So an individual that has two dogs and a cat can apply for a multiple dog permit and have an additional dog in their dwelling. But they must apply for the permit first before they get the additional dog. And they can have then four dogs within their dwelling in an R1, R2, R3, or R4 zone. And it also requires for a permit application process that they are required to notify their adjacent property owners that live within 150 feet of the subject property. So 150 feet around the property, everyone has to be notified. That includes people across the street, that includes people on the other side of the alley, that includes neighbors. And if they have a neighbor that's down 150 feet from their property, it would also require them to provide them notice as well. And the notice basically indicates that the-- that they intend, or they have applied for a permit, and that if there's any objections, an objection must be received by animal control, and the animal control officer can then receive the objections and determine. And if there aren't any objections received, then the animal control officer would issue the permit. So I believe this is consistent with what was requested. There's additional information that the applicant must provide, such as proof that their animals have in fact been vaccinated and that they have also currently licensed with the city, that all of their animals have to be licensed with the city, that the animal-- none of their animals can be designated as dangerous animals, and that they understand that their permit can be revoked if the city receives complaints of maltreatment, if the city receives complaints about nuisance such as barking, noise, unsanitary conditions, running at large, and that if any of these conditions exist, the animal control officer would issue a letter declaring that the dog permit is revoked, and the applicant must then eliminate it, augur in fact days thereafter.
Thank you, Rolf. Just one note there, slight change from-- that's reflected in this is that it's single-family dwellings that do-- that occur within the R1, R2, R3, R4. That's slightly different than we had discussed before, but a single-family.
Yeah, let me speak to that. Yeah, your honor, members, the original version just included R1 and R2, but understanding that there are single-family homes in other zoning districts, we determined that the intent was single-family homes if they had consent to their neighbors despite what the zoning district might be.
Any questions? Scott?
A couple of questions. I think in our conversations earlier, I was expecting there would be a cost for the permit, and it doesn't seem-- I didn't hear you mention anything for a cost. So is the permit a free or charge deal, or is there an intention for there to be a cost?
Your choice.
At this point, it's not really in there.
Okay. We can certainly incorporate a permit fee as set by the council, and I would, if that's what the council would like-- oh, it does say an application fee set by the council shall be submitted with the application.
So we could approve that with a resolution and then the fee schedule each year, right?
And everybody gives them a fee schedule. I believe it's $10 for a two-year permit if the pet is paid in order, $20 if they're not per pet.
So just be an addition-- same fee as an additional.
Just the additional $10 or $20 per pet.
And then maybe you just answered the other question I would have as far as the length and time of the permit. Apparently the permits are two-year permits?
They date when on any day during normal business hours, and it's a two-year permit.
Okay, because I didn't note that there was any sunset timer. Once you got it, it's good forever or good for apparently two years. Okay.
Other questions? If not, we'll need someone to introduce this ordinance as well. Thank you. Item number four is a resolution authorizing submission of a library services and technology grant for the Minnesota Department of Education to hire a digital media lab and maker space coordinator. I'll call on our library director, Andrew Smith.
Good evening, mayor, council members. There we go. I was looking for-- requesting authorization to submit an application for an LSTA grant. And this grant is issued through the Minnesota Department of Education and looking at that grant opportunity in part to fund a coordinator position for the digital media lab and maker space at the libraries. Done some research with other libraries who have done similar processes, looked for grants to hire a coordinator, help develop a curriculum for the space, kind of train the trainer with other library staff. And this looks like a good opportunity that would meet up with our needs there. It would be a year-long grant timeframe, so just looking for authorization. The grant is due on March 15th of this year, and if awarded, the timeframe for the grant would be July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2020. We have access to those lines.
And the-- sorry, I was reading this while we were talking. You may have caught this, and if so, you're going to catch me not paying attention. But what was the-- what was the amount of the grant, and is it 100% of the?
Sure, you can apply for up to $100,000, and they don't have a dollar amount. I'm still in process of.
So I didn't miss any.
Exactly, once I get authorized.
Thanks, Erin. Questions? If not, is there a resolution?
I'll offer that, your honor.
Second.
Do Mr. Thompson any other questions of our library director? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Item number five is a resolution of support for the community energy transition grants.
Thank you, your honor, members. As you all can recall, we recently joined the Coalition of Utility Cities at the beginning of the year, and this is work of that group. So they are looking at establishing a community energy transition grant program through legislation at the Capitol this year. A little background on this, the owners of Prairie Island and Monticello nuclear plants currently pay a large sum of money into a fund called the Renewable Development Account, and that is supporting Minnesota's transition towards renewable energy. And so what the Coalition of Utility Cities is working on is a grant program that would dedicate a portion of the funds in this account to a new account called the Community Energy Transition Account, which should be overseen and administered by a deed, the Department of Employment and Economic Development. And what this would be would be grants that would be able to be used by communities that host investor-owned electric generating plants, such as coal, nuclear energy, or natural gas. Fergus Falls, in this instance, would be a candidate for these grants. And the legislative language that they're using allows these grants to be used, but not limited to research, planning, studies, capital improvements, incentives for businesses to open, relocate, or expand, and job training related to the closure of these plants. So certainly right up the alley of what we need to be looking at doing and preparing for with the pending closure of the Hootley Power Plant. So what I'm looking for this evening is the council to approve a resolution of support for these files, Senate File 1888 and House File 1919. For those that are tracking bills in the legislature, there has been legislators that have signed on to all of these bills. A good number of legislators have signed on in the House, for sure, I know. So there has been a little bit of traction behind these efforts, and would like the council to put their support behind it if that's something they feel would be beneficial to the community.
Thank you. Andrew, is there any questions? If not, is there a resolution?
I'd like to introduce that resolution.
Thank you. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Brent? Any questions? Any resolutions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $942,182.88. And if there are any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director, Bill Sonmore. Seeing none, is there a resolution to pay those bills?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Carry on.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports, and there are no reports from staff or administrative officers under old business. We have a city council retreat recap, and I guess I'll start out, and then maybe if anyone else has anything to add, because we were all there, give a kind of an overview. So on February 13th, the city council, along with city staff, met at the Country Inn Suites in a retreat. The entire council was present, and I guess I just, from the council's perspective, I just wanted to publicly, and again, just thank staff and especially the lentils for the job that they did preparing for that. In my 12-plus years of being involved, it was far and away the most productive and most well-organized retreat that we've been a part of, and again, productive, I think, and that was in large part due to the work that you've put into going into that. So thank you, Lynn, thank you to all the staff, but especially to Lynn, thank you for that. So we met, staff had compiled a list of close to 50, I think it was 48 total, projects that were out there that had been brought up by someone at some point in time. They narrowed it down to the top 20 with input from the council, and then the city council just basically went head-to-head and just debated the merits of each of these projects and started to talk about a vision and talk about priorities and where we want to be. In the end, we got down to some of the top priorities. The number one being the downtown riverfront project in the end, but there was also street and infrastructure improvements, a community center that the council now agreed that the components would include aquatic center, daycare, childcare, possibly senior teen center, so a comprehensive community center that-- also a comprehensive plan, Lake Alice improvements, housing needs within the community, and parks and trails. So what we talked about at that point as we've been moving forward on the downtown riverfront projects that are across the street, we-- on a side note, council member Rooper, myself, and Andrew were in St. Paul last week. We could go tomorrow, I guess, and testified in front of the bonding committee, the capital improvement committee in the House of Representatives for the $1.75 million ask as a part of the state bonding money for the council. It was well-received, and so I guess the takeaway there is that downtown riverfront project is moving forward. Now, with that being said, the council discussed kind of how we move some of these other projects forward, and it was mentioned by many people that to do things slightly differently than in a silo and go one project at a time to kind of lump some of these together, we, I think, agreed, and I'll give each of you a chance to chime in, so if I say anything that's wrong, don't worry, you'll get a chance. But we-- I think we all-- I think it's safe to say we all agree that the local option sales tax is the best way to fund these projects. And so to look at putting together a project potentially on the 2020 ballot that would take effect after the library is paid for to fund some of these projects. So that's what we looked at, and that would include, from the council perspective, we outlined where we were at, but I think it's also equally important to mention to the public that the council recognizes that there's going to need to be community buying and community support. And so we talked about forming a task force with different stakeholders that could potentially be involved in such a project, and bringing that, and also reaching out to the public at large through community input sessions that would conceivably be held in each ward, having a series of four meetings with each ward, the council members in that ward, hosting those meetings to get the public input. And so I guess tonight, that's what I would ask the direction from the council, is for us to go ahead and I would ask you guys to provide your input of who those stakeholders are based on the meeting that we had, and then I will do my best to put together a list of-- to represent those stakeholders and bring forward in two weeks a task force for you to be approved. And then we'll-- one second, then we'll turn it over. I think talking to some people about these task forces, and I think it's a short-term task force, and my opinion and my vision would be that this does not-- it's not an all-comprehensive committee that runs all the way to the end, but identify the stakeholders and have them have a short-term, identifiable, action-oriented task to bring forth, to bring back, and that is what is included in this project. Don't get bogged down in site selection, or costs, or design, or any of those things. Just what is it, and then we can go on to the proper-- use the proper staff and community members to go on to each step, so it's achievable. But we also have a housing plan that we put together as a council and approved, and a downtown riverfront master plan project. And so I think when we're talking about these task forces, we should also consider putting together task forces to implement those plans so that they're not simply plans that are presented and then on a shelf, but we have, you know, we utilize city staff and some of the different stakeholders that are involved in those to have similar, I guess, to the dairy, quite honestly. We have a short-term objective that you put a task force together to and then charge them with that. So that's my recap of the meeting. And if you guys, if you'd like to add anything else, I guess we could just go around, or you can just-- if you have anything else to add. Anthony?
I mean, I think it was a good recap, Matt. I equally would say that it was, as you say, one of the best retreats we've had. I think everybody was engaged, which, you know, and out of it came good discussion and clarity, I think, in coming down to, you know, understanding that we can't do everything, but, you know, we have to focus on a certain number of items. And I concur, I think, you know, we need that stakeholder group, we have to clearly define what it is, and I kind of like the use of these smaller task forces where, as you say, we put definition to it and a timeline, so it doesn't get dragged on. I think one of our challenges historically has been that we create these lists, and then we just never accomplish anything off the list. And we need to get something on the ballot for next year, and that time is ticking away pretty quick. You know, I mean, to get it on the ballot, I think it was August.
A definitive answer by August.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not that far away, you know, because it'll soon be August. It's already, you know, March, and then it's April, and so. Oh, June, I'm going on vacation, so just count that. But August will be here very quickly, despite all the snow that's outside. So I think, as you say, we just need to get that as short as we think, establish the goal, and then go out and start to, you know, educate people as to why it's important to do.
Yeah, it's going to be here before we know it.
To educate people, we're going to need twelve months.
Yeah, and Your Honor, members, real quickly, staff has built a timeline that we'll share with the council in conjunction with appointing the task force. We've been looking at these dates, and we have those things put together, so.
Anyone else like to, anything else that we're missing, or that you'd like to add? You don't feel as important to add?
I'll just, if I may, just echo, you know, what you said about, you know, how productive the retreat was, and, you know, a lot of that had to do with the formatting and the work put into it by city staff. It was, you know, very informational to have, you know, the full complement of city staff at the meeting, you know, questions were answered immediately, and yeah, I mean, I think all parties involved did a good job of speaking openly and honestly, and it would, I mean, we really got some work done, and I'm very excited about the possibilities that we uncovered.
Well said. So don't give anyone opportunity if they'd like to, if there's anything we've missed, so please feel free to jump in. I guess I would ask that council, staff, and the public, if we put this task force together, we look at, think about the different stakeholders, and if you would, just send either to myself or to Lynn, just if you have someone or some group or some entity that you think needs to be represented in that initial task force, get that information to either myself or to Lynn, and then her and I will kind of begin to compile a list, narrow it down, we'll bring something back for you guys to act on in two weeks. Does that sound fair? And that invitation is open to the public as well, if they have ideas about who should be on that. Fair enough? All right. With that, we have no new business this evening. Under announcements, I'm going to show my ignorance once again this evening, Shrove Tuesday, which I did not know there was a Shrove Tuesday. I knew there was an Ash Wednesday, and a Monday Thursday, and a Good Friday, but evidently there's a Shrove Tuesday as well, and there'll be, Anthony, would you like to enlighten us on what Shrove Tuesday is?
Obviously, it's pancake day.
Pancake day, okay. It's March fifth.
That's tomorrow.
Shrove Tuesday tomorrow, everyone, and it's at Saint.
Lynn says Monika, we are Shrove Tuesday.
Shrove Tuesday. It's at the Saint James Episcopal Church, which is located on Lake Alice, and they're serving pancakes from five to seven.
Yep.
Anyone else have any other announcements they'd like to bring before the council? If not, we're adjourned.
Whoa.
That's aggressive.